Well, you know, I kinda knew that because I have somebody who is a who is a, uh, was a part of this faculty through, through geography and who you know very well. So I kinda understood that, but you know, that geography thing is something that we all are not so sure about. But yes, um, there are several, um, among the alumni population that would have um, come through the faculty, uh, through the geography program. So how are you doing, my friend?
I am very well, and I want to tell you how pleased I am that the faculty is doing this. I think this might be an inaugural F H E Alumni Town Hall. In my time, certainly within the faculty, either as student or lecturer, I don't recall any such things. I want to congratulate the administration for this initiative and hope that we're going to, to gain a lot of insights, certainly from our panelists and through the question and answer segment.
Yes, um, I, I mean, it's, it's really very important for us to engage with our alumni. Um, you know, normally you hear people talk about, you know, they have been to other places and uh, the universities would be in touch with them and so on. I, I think, yes, you're right. This, this is, this is a very important, uh, initiative. And it's really an indication to those who are here with us that, you know, we, we, we really want to be in touch with you, to hear from you, to, to help, so that you can make yourself available to help with the transformation of, of our faculty. Um, you said that was maybe the inaugural, yes, please.
Yes, so we want, we want to welcome everybody because this is an important day. This is indeed a, an important week. This is an important period in the life of the Faculty of Humanities and Education, and you're gonna hear more from our dean, Professor Sylvia Cohenberg, who will situate the, the, the context for this town hall and, and how it is we plan to move in, in the future. But, uh, welcome everyone. I see that we have seventy of us online. This is fantastic. I want to welcome also those persons who are serving in the faculty at this time. I see my colleagues, I see staff members, lecturers and so on. And it's important that we have this dialogue, not only with those who may no longer be on the campus, but certainly those who are presently serving in the faculty. So I want to welcome everyone. I want to welcome, uh, our principal. I don't know if he's here yet, who is going to also bring us some remarks. Uh, certainly also, we want to thank those who have put in the time, Patrick, to make this event possible. So that we don't forget. Let's start out with that thank you as well. And to welcome our, our colleagues who have been behind the scenes putting this event together. So welcome one and all.
Yes, and I, I think as you said before, I mean, it's important for us to set the context and I, I hope our, our, their dean is ready for us because she's actually going to do the official, uh, welcome. Uh, Professor Cohenberg, it's your turn.
Well, thank you, um, Patrick and Sonia. Uh, this is an event that I'm very, very excited about and I am really happy to see the list of attendees. I see quite a few names that I recognize. Um, I'm on the program twice, so I'm going to, you know, leave my more substantial remarks for my second appearance. Right now, I just want to acknowledge the presence of the campus principal, Professor Denzel Williams, the presence of heads of department, deputy deans, and the various other staff members, and of course, the presence of very many Faculty of Humanities and Education alumni. Welcome all to this inaugural Alumni Town Hall meeting. This is to set us on the path towards an actual, uh, Faculty of Humanities and Education Alumni Chapter. And like I said, I'm going to leave my more substantial remarks for my second appearance on the program. And so I'm handing back to the emcees at this time.
Thank you very much, Dean Cohenberg. And at this time, we want to invite, uh, Dr. Carol Horder Gentles, who is going to introduce our principal.
Um, I, I'm not sure.
I, I, I think that maybe if Dean, Dr. Edward Carr.
Oh, my bad, my apologies.
No problem, we're all good buds here, we'll support each other.
Yeah, of, of course.
Beautifully dressed for the occasion. I am not, so.
Okay, Dr. Carr.
Good afternoon, colleagues and friends. I, um, it is my pleasure to present to you this evening Professor Denzel Williams, Principal of the University of the West Indies Mona. Professor Williams is a renowned academic in the field of business and management. He is a former principal of the U W I Five Islands Campus and also former pro vice chancellor, industry, academic partnerships and planning at the U W I. Before joining U W I in two thousand and seven, he served in the private sector as a business analyst in strategy and transformation at one of Jamaica's largest multinational corporations. He is the youngest person to be promoted to the rank of professor at the U W I Mona Campus. And also the first person in the history of the Business and Management Department to be promoted to professor. Professor Williams has led several transformational initiatives in administrative processes, research and innovation, as well as teaching and learning while at U W I. For example, he spearheaded the establishment of the first Bloomberg Finance, Finance Lab in a business school in the Caribbean, and that lab went on to win an award for innovation in two thousand and eighteen. In addition, he led a comprehensive revision of the M B A and M S C curriculum to make them more applicable to the modern workplace. The various initiatives led to the school achieving great improvements in its financial performance and an increased public profile. He has also spearheaded the conceptualization and build-out of a master plan for the expansion of the physical plant of the Five Islands Campus in Antigua and Barbuda and partnered with the government of Antigua and Barbuda to raise over eighty million US dollars to finance the execution of that master plan. Our principal has an impressive academic re- resume. He obtained a B S C with first-class honors in economics and management studies and an M S C in international business from U W I. In two thousand and six, he received a P H D in international business and strategy from Manchester Business School at the University of Manchester in the U K. He was also a Jamaica government exhibition scholar, a Jamaica flower mill scholar, a Lo May Four scholar and a Commonwealth scholar. He was also awarded the prize for the most outstanding researcher in the Faculty of Social Sciences at the U W I Mona Campus, both in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fifteen. He is the author of five books and more than seventy refereed journal articles in academic journals and conferences. Professor Williams has built a career in business and academia for over twenty-two years. He has held a remarkable public record, a record of public service, research and scholarly work while serving on a number of boards of state entities, private sector organizations and committees, as well as regional and international editorial boards. It certainly is my delight to present our principal to you. Good evening.
Very well, very well. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Edwards Carr. And let me also say how pleased I am, uh, to be here, like all my other colleagues. And I would like to use the opportunity to really congratulate the leadership of the Faculty of Humanities and Education for this very, very important, um, gathering, uh, this evening. Uh, it really speaks to our strategic plan. Uh, if those of you who follow twenty-two, uh, to twenty-seven plan, you would recognize that on the, the, the strategic pillar of alignment, we have a strategic, uh, objective of, uh, A L three, we label it. And it says specifically, uh, that we are going, A L two, sorry, increase and improve alumni engagement and involvement in the life of the university. And that's very, very important because what is happening this evening from F H E really fully aligns with our strategic plan. And is indeed one of those initiatives that I think will have far-reaching impact on our campus and our university. I, I, I wish to note that the strategic plan didn't say that we are coming to our alumni to gain something. It says that you must be involved in the life of the university. Because normally when people think of our alums, they think of people who just open the purse and give some money to the, uh, community. Well, we have taken a different approach as a university. We say we want our alums to be involved in the life and work of the university. And so, uh, besides just your financial contribution, we actually want your human resource contribution as well, your intellectual input into the life of the university. And so I think F H E is on to something great, um, when they have put together this forum to invite our alums to say, let us now talk about how you want to see your university, the kind of university that you want to see in the near future. And so, uh, it is really a pleasure for me to, uh, to, to be here, to join in the celebration this evening. I want to thank the leadership, Dean Cohenberg, um, associate deans, heads, and everybody who has been involved in this kind of, um, preparation for this event this evening. I really want to thank you. But most importantly, I really want to thank the alums who have turned out in their numbers uh, to, to be a part of their, their faculty as well. I, I didn't have the privilege of studying in the Faculty of Humanities and Education, except that I did one course called Ideologies of God. And I thought that was the most important and interesting course to have learned in my entire life. But it was so good to have joined the faculty at that time to, uh, to, to, to do those kinds of things. But importantly, um, you would appreciate colleagues that the Faculty of Humanities and Education is indeed an important pillar of our academic enterprise. Um, and why is it so important? Because it's one of those faculties that really helped to shape the all-round thinking of the graduates that we, uh, that we have from our, our university. You would appreciate that the, uh, ideal U W I graduate standards have been enshrined in our strategic plan, and there are about twelve different criteria that we look for in terms of creating the ideal U W I graduate. And most of those actually are embedded in what you do in the humanities. So our humanities, uh, uh, discipline is indeed a very important area for our universe. And what we are doing now as a university is to make sure that we have the humanities permeating all aspects of our, our enterprise. And I want to again, uh, say how pleased I am to see the, the, the transformation that is about to take place at the faculty. We have just approved, uh, a, a major transformational plan that the dean brought to, uh, to, uh, uh, the partners committee and, um, uh, campus F and G P C a few months ago, to relook the whole, uh, imaging, organization and workings of the faculty. And we have supported it, uh, at our senior management and our governance committees to have, uh, a consultant work with the dean to say, what is the reimagined humanities going to look like? And one of those issues is to really make the entire university, uh, feel the, 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 the tentacles of the humanities to help to shape the ideal U W I graduate that we are looking, uh, looking at. And so I'm really very proud of those kinds of initiatives coming from our Faculty of Humanities in order to make sure that it remains relevant in a, in a time when, um, you know, resources are scarce and people are wondering what to cut and where to cut. And, you know, normally people look to places with smaller numbers. But as I was discussing just last night with some colleagues, um, while the numbers in the, in the absolute sense, in the humanities may be small, if you take the numbers, uh, in the more general sense, where the humanities touch, uh, touches on all the aspects of the universe. The truth is that the humanities is indeed a force to be reckoned with. And so we want to make sure that we don't make the mistake of taking a chainsaw approach, um, as most other universities have done when numbers are small, to just, um, you know, uh, go away with, with, uh, faculties and departments with small numbers. But we look at the strategic value of our departments and stuff in order to make decisions about how we allocate resources. And so, um, our, our, our humanities faculty is indeed one of those areas that, uh, I don't see as a cost center per se, but I see it as more of a strategic center that is critical towards the, of the building of our campus and our university. And so I really want to encourage you to support the work of the, uh, Faculty of Humanities and Education. But more importantly, what you would like to know is really where your campus is going and some of the real wonderful initiatives that we have in order to actually steer our campus, um, for the future. And so, uh, you would appreciate that the campus, uh, for a long time has struggled, uh, financially. But that is not really what defines our campus. Our campus is indeed, uh, a place for knowledge, for enlightenment, for learning. And as a result of that, it is very, very important that we see the university as most more than just a financial hub or an enterprise that is about to generate some profit or to generate some surplus on, uh, on its P and L. It is rich more, it's much more than that. It is really about light, liberty and learning. And as a result of that, whatever we're doing here really must be geared towards creating that kind of sensibility within our students. And as a result of that, uh, what we are focusing on is to really get the campus to focus back on its core operation of teaching, learning, research and advocacy. And we're doing a number of things in that regard to ensure that these things happen. So for example, uh, we have used student success as a major pillar of our strategic reorientation to say, how are we ensuring that the students that come into our campus, that their success is secure? Our view is that every student that comes through the Queensway Gate or the Irving Hall Gate or the post office gate or anywhere that they enter the campus from, once they enter the campus and they have a mission to, to achieve something, we, the campus must make sure that we facilitate that achievement. So we must invest in the infrastructure, we must invest in teaching and learning, we must invest in all of the things that are supporting their success. So that when they leave here, they can actually feel that they have actually, uh, been supported and have something to contribute, uh, to our, our, our academy, um, on, on leaving. And so student success is an important part of what we do. We have now directed our deputy principal to be the champion of student success. So he will now, uh, pull his team together and they're going to focus on all the things that are necessary to ensure the success of our students. Students who come into our campus, if they come, if they came here for a three-year degree, they should leave in three years. You should not come for a three-year degree and leave after seven years. Students who come for, uh, uh, postgraduate degrees, PhDs and those kinds of things, uh, they have a five-year window within which to do that, they should leave in five years. And what we're trying to do is to make sure that they achieve those things. Students who start in year one, we need to ensure that they continue through their programs and stuff. Because when we look at the things like on-time graduation rate, when we look at the things like retention rate and stuff, the truth is that our campus and our universe is not where we want it to be. And as a result of that, we are making sure that we put the things in place, to invest in those things, to improve on our retention rate, our graduation rate and improve on creating the ideal U W I graduate. And so there are a number of things that we're doing in order to ensure the sustainability of the campus. As you would recognize, and, and those of you who follow our strategic plan, will realize that the university's, uh, capital base, uh, has been eroded for a long time, uh, to the tune of about fifty million US dollars, it's about, uh, seven billion Jamaican dollars. And so we have looked at it and we have taken a very tough decision to say that we have to build back the capital base of the university in order to invest in the things that are going to be important to create a world-class university, our research, our teaching and learning, et cetera. And so we are making efforts to make sure that we rebuild the capital base and have enough, uh, enough resources now to invest in these kinds of things that are important to us as a, as a university. And so we have a plethora of projects that we are rolling out. Um, I'll just mention a few of them, but the general objective is to gain over the next five years about four point five, uh, to five billion, uh, Jamaican dollars in order to secure, uh, the future of the campus. Because we have some headwinds that are coming that we are looking at in terms of our finances. And to stave off those headwinds, we have to, we have to make sure that we manage our costs, but we have to grow our revenues. And so we have a number of initiatives in place that we are pursuing now to grow revenues. And I'll just mention a few. One of them is our Global Health Initiative, which we are looking at training not just nurses and doctors, but we're looking at training people, uh, for the global health market, which as you know, there is a significant shortage in terms of workers in the health sector. Um, over eighteen million, the last survey that showed, in terms of global shortage for healthcare workers in things like, uh, speech therapy, imaging specialists, um, in things, things like nutritionists and nurses, doctors and all of those people. So we have now developed a global health program, which we are now going to participate in the training of workers to fit the healthcare sector. We're expecting to generate roughly about three billion dollars from that over the next five years. Um, so we started that program in June of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. We had projected to earn roughly about three hundred and fifty million dollars by this time. And where we are now, we are seeing where we have gained over four hundred million dollars to date. And we are expecting to grow this as we go forward. We're also looking at making sure that we use a talent on the campus in order to generate revenue. We have the physical facilities here. We also have our human resources here. We have the, some of the best and the brightest students anywhere in the hemisphere. We want to use them to now sell that knowledge that they have into the global economy. So they earn and they learn and the campus is learning as well. So we have now, uh, we will be now launching, uh, next year, a knowledge process outsourcing, uh, enterprise that is now going to take the talent that we have, you know, to, to, to do, outsource things like architectural services, uh, engineering services, legal services, accounting services, animation, all those kinds of things with our creativity and stuff. We can do them here and we can sell to the rest of the world. So the knowledge process outsourcing, uh, sector is going to be an important part that we're playing in as a campus, uh, as well. Similarly, we will see, uh, the campus interacting much closer with industry through what we now call our institutional architecture, that is called UE Star. UE Star is really a, a new institutional arrangement within the campus that is taking all of our short courses. Some people don't want to do a degree for three to five years, but they want to upskill themselves in order to make sure that they are relevant in this place of work. So they may want to do a six-weeks course or a three-weeks course or even a ten-hour course or even a fifteen-hours, uh, hours course. We are now going to do design, we have now designed rather, uh, an enterprise within the U W, U W I called UE Star that is going to allow you to come, do those courses, upskill yourselves, gain a UE credit. And if down the line, you want to pursue a degree, uh, at the U W I, you can trade in those credits and you can actually get credits towards your degree as well. So it minimizes your time in terms of doing your degree. So UE Star is now, uh, is now fully approved by the university and we will be launching that officially in January of next year as well. So we are looking at these kinds of things and we are making sure that we actually future-proof the university in order to make sure that we actually have the, the resources to invest in the things that are important to our university. Similarly, we have some im- immediate challenges that we have to deal with as well. Uh, we have been, we know, we entered into some commercial deals that have been exceptionally costly to our university. They bleed cash flow from the university. And at this moment, those things are important for us to make sure that we can have enough cash that we can use it more efficiently to deal with basic things like infrastructure and stuff. So what we have done, we are restructuring our balance sheet. We are now taking out a bond that is going to take away the high-cost, uh, transactions that we have dealt with, uh, before. And we are replacing that with lower-cost transactions. And as a result of that, we should be saving roughly about one hundred million dollars on these bonds. We are now, on these payments that we used to make for these high-cost transactions that we used to do. We are now on the cusp of signing off on the bond. Where we are now is really the legal arrangements. Uh, well, the legal arrangements have been completed, so it's just really dotting the i's, crossing the t's. Just last night, we got the letter of approval from the Financial Services Commission to say that, hey, you can now upsize the amount that you were asking for. Because we went to the market, we, we searched out investors and say, these are the things that we are going to do at the University of the West Indies. We want some funds to help us to get these things through and we are restructuring our balance sheet. Would you be willing to participate? And I must say, and we're very pleased to say that when we went to the market, the overwhelming support was there to support the University of the West Indies. And therefore they asked that we upsize the amount that we were asking for to the tune of one billion dollars more and they will take all of that money from us. And so we had to go back to the Financial Services Commission, got them to approve an, an increase in the, in the amount. We have now gotten that increase and all investors have now signed off on that. So we should be seeing a restructured balance sheet, uh, for the U W I, which is going to improve our working capital and allow us some resources to invest in some of these things. So colleagues and friends, your university is doing, um, some amazing things in order to future-proof, uh, your campus to make sure that we preserve the legacy that we have built for this university. And there are many other things that are, that are to come to ensure that the University of the West Indies is fully future-proof and therefore we can continue to offer high-quality programs to our students so that they can become great alums for the future and secure the legacy of this university. The days ahead are very, very exciting for us and this is where you come in as alums. You have to participate in your campus. You have to be a part of all these in- important initiatives that we're trying to, uh, to pursue at our campus. You have skill set in various areas. We're asking you to lend your skill sets back to your campus so that you can actually help us to achieve these wonderful initiatives that we have put forward on the table to secure the future for our campus. So colleagues and friends, uh, there's a lot more that I could say, but I know that there is a lot more that needs to be said from other persons. And tonight again, I just want to congratulate the leadership of the Faculty of Humanities and Education. Thank you very much for this wonderful initiative. It is not just to respond to the strategic plan, but it's a very timely initiative that we all deserve at our university, to engage with our alums so that they can be the voice and ambassadors for our campus. So thank you very much and I look forward to joining the celebration again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal. Principal, this has been, uh, a call to action, I would say, Patrick. My takeaways, the ideal U W I graduate, life, liberty, learning, uh, certainly securing success. These are the takeaways for me, future-proofing and that indeed, the, the, the humanities, where students come, uh, they become, they are agile, they respond to national development and certainly to regional, uh, development and are grounded. They are in touch. This is part of what, uh, we have with the U W I graduate from the humanities. I want you to keep your reactions coming. I notice Miguel, a star is born. Principal, I hope you're seeing these comments. Charles Ball, UE Star, clap, clap, clap. Keep your reactions and your comments coming. We want to be able to, to hear from you. And Principal, certainly, we want to thank you for always with your spirited, uh, determination to put this campus on the right track, that indeed and in fact, the humanities is a large part of what we must also attend to. So thank you, Patrick.
Yes, you, you know, Sonia, I mean, I, I, before he goes, I have to say, I mean, it's such passion, such conviction. I mean, we're, we're feeling the energy, uh, and, and I, and I hope we'll all rally. Um, as in they say in the West Indies, rally. We need to rally around the way at the St. Yes. You know, um, but I'm, I'm, I'm particularly happy to hear in the context. I mean, we talk about all the financial challenges and so on, but I mean, this engagement is not just about going to people's pockets, but also as he said, you know, there is intellectual input, um, that we know, um, we, we, we're, we're going to want to see uh, and receive from our alum. And, and so I'm really, really very happy. But another thing I'm happy about, um, um, Sonia is that he said that the humanities, he sees the humanities as a critical and strategic value within the UE ecosystem, right? But also, but also in terms of our overall higher education experience. You know, Principal, we just had, um, when I say we know, within the Faculty of Humanities and certainly at Carmack, we had the, the Minister of Education, now Minister of Education, but then Minister of Information over with us when we were launching our fiftieth anniversary. And she also spoke about the fact that she was not privileged to be at Carmack. You are saying you were not privileged, except in this, this particular course on Ideas of God. Um, but she lamented the fact that she Um but she lamented the fact that she didn't get the experience here and so wanted to be here. So we are happy when you economists. Can.
And we're, we're social scientists, yes.
Can actually speak to that fact um of your experience being such a, an all-round one. Um having, you know, some, some education grounding, educational grounding within the Faculty of Humanities and Education. So thank you very mu- much, Principal. And we, we look forward to the continued support um to the faculty in this period of transformation.
Thank you too. And I hope you all have a really good rest of the evening. Unfortunately. Um Dean and, and colleagues, I'm gonna have to run to another function, yes? Um which I, 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 I had engaged with, but I hope that you all have a really, really good evening. But if there's any questions that we want to take, I could maybe spare about five minutes or so. Uh if anyone wants to raise any questions, um Dr. Naya or Dr. Prendigas, please.
Right, now easier chance, everyone. Is there any question that you have for Principal before he goes?
Principal, I don't know if you want to take this, so Melissa has her hand up. So let's, let's, let's hear from Melissa. It's good to hear the voices.
Yes, go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be a part of this session and I'm also, I'm just as excited as the principal is. And as Dr. Naya sounds about what is happening, um certainly within this faculty. It's, I love the Faculty of Humanities. I, 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 I've never been anywhere else and I won't go anywhere else. Um as a graduate student, I listened to the principal just now. Uh and you know how important it is for graduate students to drive the, you know, the innovation. And so on in the uni. Still able to hear me?
Yes, we're hearing you. We're hearing you.
Okay, so I, I, um, I just want to ask the principal, what are his plans for um graduate spaces? So that graduate students, you know, have a, have a nice space to come and to, to, to do their work and so on. So we can get all of that innovation out. So I'd like to ask about that. Graduate, a, a space for, for graduates, for graduate students. Uh particularly over at the Faculty of Humanities and Education.
Excellent question.
Yes, uh do I just answer straight ahead or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Melissa. And happy that you're, uh you're still with us as a graduate student. Um. But suffice to say, in relation to space and issues, while some of those issues are very domestic. And we want to support them at the level of the various faculties and stuff that will uh organize your space. One of the things that you'll be happy to, to know is that we are very advanced now in building a campus center. And that campus center will be a state-of-the-art facility that is going to accommodate our students, uh our faculty. We will have in there um spaces for graduate students that they can do private work. We will have uh spaces for. Uh our guild of students, we'll have a guild parliament, we will have space in there for fine dining, restaurants and all of those things. It's a. Three, four thousand square foot facility that we're actually building. We have the drawings and stuff now. We have been engaged with our financiers. So we should be breaking ground uh in, in twenty twenty five and we, our hope is that we can finish by twenty twenty six November. In time for graduation. So a lot of these infrastructure things are going to be coming on board um in a broader way. But there will be support at the level of the faculty to do um things to support their domestic environment there. And I, I spoke about the liability management program as well. And I must say that um what we have done uh just two weeks ago. We have identified a carve-out of about three hundred million that is now going to go in this, in the next eight months, starting January. Towards improvement of facilities. But over the next year or so, we're looking for about one point five billion. To invest in ex- existing faculty, not uh facilities, not just the new facilities, but. Out of that liability management program that we have described a while ago, we're carving out one point five billion. The first carve-out. Of three hundred million should start uh big, being in effect by January of next year. And then we want to build on that. Uh over the next eighteen months or so. So we do want to see the faculty come with their plans, come with their ideas for. Uh space for graduate students, et cetera, and we will support it as best as we can. Uh but we have a bigger picture for the overall campus center that is going to take these things into consideration.
Thank you, Principal. Um I, I think, I know you're really strapped for time, but um we're going to ask Hammond and there is a Samsung SM. Usually we ask people to rename yourself when you come into the group, so we know who is speaking. We'll just take those two, Principal, if you don't mind and. Um then you can respond to those and, you know, thank you very much for being with us. Um Hammond?
Hi, my apologies for not renaming myself. And you may be familiar with me, Mr. Prendigast, as Sidion Brissette. As is the principal, yes. Alumni of, of Karamak, of the Faculty of Humanities of the University of the West Indies and I am joining from Atlanta, Georgia, where I now reside.
Fantastic.
Awesome. So I was also a student of yours, Dr. Sonia. I was in your Caribbean studies class sometime, years ago, many, many years ago. So my main concern, and this extends beyond the faculty to more the university. I live in a global space now and I work in a global space and my UE degree, my Karamak training. I believe has placed me top-notch. I'm at the top of the ladder. I consider myself to be a success story and I know a lot of this is attributed to the training, the education and the development which I received at the University of the West Indies. So by extension, I consider the University of the West Indies to be the Ivy League of the Caribbean. But I don't feel like we are being branded as such. The competition is getting ridiculous out there with the other universities. I am seen in the local Jamaican space. Um and they are coming off as being in the standard and league with UE. I do not believe they are. Call me a snob, right? I don't apologize for it. I don't believe they're in the league of what we receive at UE and what we're able to contribute to the world. So I wanna know about the plans to begin to brand the UE graduate. Let's get aggressive about it. How we brand the UE graduate, the Karamak graduate, the humanities graduate. As the employer of choice, the, 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 the academic mind of choice. Right? Your researcher of choice. To, 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 to show the world that what UE is producing is really a much higher standard. Than what, what the rest of the world is producing. Maybe us alumni need to get more involved. Maybe people like me and other alumni need to come out and say, listen, yeah, I did a degree in humanities. But beyond that, my humanities degree has led me to work in marketing. It led me to work in H R. It led me to work in project management. It led me to work in healthcare. So I, as a graduate of UE, UE, I am really diverse, right? I am not locked into a box. So my concern is how we are branding that UE graduate to show that UE is really Ivy League, to show that Karamak is Ivy League. Because I believe this has a long way to go when you think of the other universities, the Harvard graduate. They are not smarter than us. They are not better than us. But they are working really hard at the image, the branding and how they are presenting themselves. To the world. So that's my question.
Thank you. Um, um Prof, I know you're, you're eager to respond to that, um but um we're going to ask Samsung. Um well, we can ask Samsung, whoever is behind Samsung.
Samsung.
Um to, to um, to put your comment or question forward so we can take our, get our response from Principal.
Good day, everyone. Good evening. I'm sorry, I had not put my name in when I came in, but I came in late and I was so excited. That I did not think about that. So my sincerest apologies. Um I should say, it's funny that I'm speaking after um. Or learning, learned colleague that just spoke. Um my name is Shauna Murray. And I am not yet an alumni. Because I have just joined the faculty as a special student. And my perspective, my question is this. Is the University of the West Indies considering a more, and I will use the, the term, a more. Robust uh program. In its, in its global, in its global school. I'm looking specifically at the whole issue of work-based learning. Because here it is that I'm one of those individuals that gained my qualification. In the UK through a process of work, work-based learning. I am not going to say that um seeing the university in the light that the other speaker saw it in. I'm not gonna call it snobbery because if I attended a, a school, I'm going to consider that school to be the best. But my question sits in the whole framework of global opportunities. And individuals such as myself who did not, for whatever reason, have the opportunity to go into university full-time. At an earlier stage in our lives. Neither did we have the money for it, right? Um at a later stage. And we were able to take the experience, the solid experience we, we had amassed over time. Within the work sphere and have that accredited along with having to take on some additional courses, yes? And that accreditation being considered to be at the highest level in line with those of our colleagues. Who gained their, their um knowledge, having gone into school first, right? I believe, in, in light of my question, I believe that the University of the West Indies took too long. To, to understand the positioning of schooling, I'm not gonna call it education, of schooling in the global sphere. But I was happy when I went on doing some searches that night and realizing that you have some programs. In a no global school, but those programs are pitched at a certain level. I would like to know that the university is considering pitching programs for work-based learning at a higher level. I end by saying, there are many still in the workforce, operating at very um critical levels. In their organizations, governments and otherwise. Who's, who in needing to study after return to the university? Um it's not working well for me going back and forth to school because of the nature of my job. There are others like myself. We need that kind of facility. Will the university consider it? And if, if it was said before and I missed it, sorry. And if you are, if you're not at a place where you are now considerate. Is there considering it? Is there a willingness to consider it? My name is Shauna Murray and thank you for letting me give such an extensive question and comment.
Thank you, Shauna. Uh Principal?
Okay, thank you very much. Uh thanks to Shauna and Sidion as well, my friend, uh for the comments. Listen. Shauna, uh your, your observations are quite um uh quite useful. But suffice to say that indeed the university is considering those things. Because one of the initiatives, I didn't go into that in detail, that I spoke about in future-proofing the university. Is a massive reform of our curriculum right across the entire system. And so we're looking at all of those kinds of issues that you spoke about, you know, how are we pitching people? Who have different levels of qualification, different types of qualification, how we get them to come into the university. How to get them to move up the, um to move up in terms of the academic qualification. What are the kinds of things that we're doing in terms of assessment and learn? All of those things will be taken into consideration. As we look towards revamping the whole curriculum of our, uh of our en- our enterprise uh here at the university. So yes. This is something that will be on the, on the cards. We have what we call our malt meetings. We have once a month, we meet with our deans. Uh Mona Academic Leadership Team, we call it, and we discuss these kinds of issues. And now we're going to operationalize them in a real way. In terms of looking at our entire curriculum and we will uh make an announcement very soon about the structure of the committee that is going to be looking at those things. Uh later on. So thank you very much for that. And yes, your university is considering those things. Uh Sidion made a very, very powerful observation about branding and marketing, basically how positioning. As a university, the real issue is about positioning as a university. And the truth is that it is something that um we have not done well for a long time. And so what we are now doing is to rethink exactly how we position the University of the West Indies in the global academic sphere. And one of the early um uh indication of that is that we are the only university. We are the only university within the Caribbean space right now that has gone for global ranking. We're the only university that has gone. And that is, that is indeed not an accident. It is part of the positioning. It is part of the positioning of our academy as a part of the global elite university, not elitist now, but part of the global elite. High-ranked university. And that's what we did uh as a first step. Now, we are doing other things in terms of our marketing and stuff like that. For example, here at the Mona Campus, we recognize. That a lot of the things that we do, and we call it marketing and branding, is really events management. And that has taken up a lot of our time and attention. And we have not focused strategically on what is really branding and what is marketing, et cetera. So we have just approved at F and G P C yesterday to take out the events planning area of our campus. And put that in a brand-new unit with a director that is now focusing exclusively on events and managing those things and allow. Marketing and communication to now really focus on strategic marketing and building the brand and putting the brand out there. So we are going to be getting assistance from relevant persons who are trained in this kind of discipline to assist us to do those kinds of things. So. We are not, we are thinking through those things and we are operationalizing them as well. And again, this is where the skill set of our alum come in because. They are also out there doing these kinds of work already. And this is where you can come in and support your university. In helping us to now properly position the brand in the marketplace so that we can extract greater value from it. So. Yes, these things are important and we are considering them and we're asking for your support on them as well, okay?
Thank you so much, Principal. I want to just really underscore the point about positioning. And the, the, the UE as the Ivy League of the Caribbean. We can't go around it. We need to deal with the issue of branding and positioning, as you put it, Principal. Yes, we agree with you, Sidion. The humanities graduate, an employee of choice, the academic of choice and researcher of choice, yes. We underscore all of those points. I want to also just highlight that Jason Williams asked, how can I contribute? Other students may have the same question. And of course, we are going to be able to respond to you. Uh Principal, in fact, shared that there are some initiatives coming up and that we will, we will respond to those uh comments soon enough. Thank you so much, Principal. We know you do have to go.
Okay, thank you so much. Enjoy. Please enjoy the rest of the day and hope to see everybody again. At various events for your faculty and your university. Thank you so much. Have a happy holidays, everybody, yes?
Thank you. Same to you, Principal.
Good, good. Bye-bye.
All right, so it is.
Thank you, Principal.
Thank you. It is up to now our dean to really contextualize for us. Uh this F H E uh town hall. And where is it that the faculty is in fact going? So let me just uh welcome our dean, uh Sil- Professor Sylvia Cohenberg to, to, to address us.
Okay, um Prof Cohenberg, are you seeing your slides on the screen?
Uh no, not yet. Oh, actually, yes. Yes, yes. There it is. There it is. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to turn off my video because my connection is a little uncertain. So um I'll just be speaking. Um so I thought I would use the opportunity to create a somewhat nostalgic feeling, I hope. Um I know there are graduates here from different periods of time, some very recent graduates, some from the twen- early two thousands, some from the. Past nineteen nineties. Um okay, so let's go to the next um slide. And by the way, the sculpture is one that is going to be familiar to you if you. Uh were uh in this faculty because it's the one behind faculty office. So we are in our current state, a, a faculty of eight departments. Of course, we really formally were two faculties. Uh Faculty of Arts and Faculty of Education. I'm going to show you the timeline in a minute, minute. But these are our eight departments today. And we offer about a hundred programs at undergraduate and graduate level. Um of, when we compare Mona to the other campuses, we offer the widest array of programs. At both the undergraduate and graduate levels. And on the next slide. Next, yes, there we go. Next, yes, there we go. I'm going to just introduce you to our current heads of department uh who are probably all uh in the room as well. Uh so eight departments, that means eight heads of departments or directors. Dr Julian Cresser on at the left top for History and Archaeology, next to him, Dr Stanley Griffin for Library and Information Studies. Below left, Dr Marcia Rainford for School of Education, and to the right, Dr Vet Milson White for the Department of Language, Linguistics and Philosophy, my academic home. And then on the next slide. Left top, Dr Patrick Prendergast, the current director of Kerimac. Next to him, Dr Dave Goss, the head of the Institute of Caribbean Studies. Bottom left, Dr Lisa Tomlinson, Literatures and English, uh formerly the Department of English. And to her right, Dr Maiti Vioria Noya for Modern Languages and Literatures. And on the next slide. The remainder of the faculty's senior management team. Uh Deputy Dean, Dr Nova Gordon Bell for Undergraduate Matters at the left top. Going along to the right, Dr Shailar Esprit for Postgraduate Matters. Next to her, Susheta Stevenson for Marketing and Business Development, who's been working very hard behind the scenes to make this event happen, along with other deputy deans. Then Dr Carol Horder Gentles at the top right for Deputy Dean for Wellness and Success. Left bottom, Dr Dion Edwards-Carr, Deputy Dean for Research and Resource Mobilisation, and me uh last. And then, as we continue. This is uh the mission of the faculty is, of course, to advance learning, create knowledge and foster innovation through teaching outreach and research in the humanities and education. And we aim to have a positive impact in the Caribbean and beyond. Because we are an industry-facing, globally-aligned activist faculty who we achieve excellence in research and teaching, and we are rooted in a Caribbean tradition of humanism. And we embrace core values such as student-centredness, integrity, excellence, gender justice, inclusion, diversity, ethical responsibility and financial accountability. And then if we look at our our beginnings, this uh we are actually about to enter our seventy-fifth year of existence. Uh because the Faculty of Arts, as it was first known, was formally established just two years after the University College was established, the Faculty of Arts goes back to nineteen fifty. And two years after were the beginnings of what ultimately became the Faculty of Education. And then um ultimately, of course, the two faculties were merged to become a Faculty of uh Arts and Education, later the Faculty of Humanities and Education. So in twenty twenty-five, we will be in our seventy-fifth year of existence. And one of the things that we will be keeping you apprised of is the very many events that we will be organising to celebrate that. Next. And here, uh it's important to acknowledge um how much the faculty has contributed um to the global recognition of excellence coming out of the University of the West Indies. Uh so I'm giving you a little um um uh a little puzzle here. Um do you recognise some of our um former students and staff members that are featured here? Of course, I had to make a very small selection uh out of the many, many, many um persons who have come out of this faculty that have had a big impact in the world. Okay, so um giving you another ten seconds to see if you recognise some. Yes, Sir Roy Ogier is definitely there. Um Rocky Mead is there. Yes, uh-huh. Marlon James, thank you. Joe Pereira, very good. Rex Nettleford, yes. All right, uh Miller, yes. Elsa Leo Rainey, oh my god, you guys are doing really well. Velma Pollard, Oswald Harding, Errol Miller, Breathwaite. All right, the next slide tells it all. Just go to the next one for those of you who were uh not quite as good as recognising everyone. Yes, Walter Rodney was definitely their number five. Okay, so median communications scholar, former dean of this faculty, Agri Brown. Uh linguist, graduate of the Linguistics Programme and former Chief of Defence Staff of the Jamaica Defence Force, Rocky Mead. Um historian and feminist philosopher, Lynette Vessel. Uh sorry, Lynette Vessel, historians Sir Roy Ogier, historian and political leader and and activist uh Avon Aletta, Walter Rodney. Um uh is Cuban literature scholar, former dean and former deputy principal, Joe Pereira. Educationist and former Mona Campus Principal, Elsa Leo Rainey, Rex Nettleford. Um Derek Walcott, Velma Pollard, Camo Breathwaite, Marlon James, Oswald Harding, Errol Miller, Antoine. Um like I said, it's just a very small selection, based largely on the convenience of how easy it was to get photographs. Um but the point is that, you know, when we think of the impact that that Jamaica has made, that our faculty has made, an impact that is both local, both within this institution, regional and global. These are some of the people who have played a role in that, and these are the people that we acknowledge. And Professor Mervyn Elaine, thank you. I did ask for uh people to uh name their own favourite heroes, and Mervyn Elaine is must clearly be one of them. Uh so among the many things that we do is we give a lot of service to the campus. We have some campus-wide programmatic responsibilities. Uh we have a responsibility for what is now called academic literacy. For those of you who go back far enough, you would have known it as Use of English. And then it became Critical Reading and Writing. We have a responsibility for the foreign language policy. And um for humanity students, of course, it has always been the case that there was a foreign language requirement for humanity students, but this is now a university-wide. And it has been opened up to the non-traditional languages such as sign language, Creole languages. Uh and this is something that we are really proud of, that this foreign language policy does not discriminate against vernacular languages. And for the next slide. Dr Pauline Christie is somebody's hero, thank you. You can keep naming your heroes. Thank you for that. Um some of the ways in which we are revising our programmes are very significant. Um we uh they're going in the direction of what we call multidisciplinarity. It is now becoming very unusual, really, for programmes to be based in a single discipline. In fact, in the humanities and education, we really believe, thank you, John Jay. We really believe in um programmes that cross boundaries. So some of our innovative new programmes include Culture and Creative Industries, Film Studies, Music and Performance Studies, Languages and Linguistics with Languages Plural, History and Journalism, History with Foreign Language, History and International Relations. Uh and uh uh Writing, Literature and Publishing and a new minor and diploma in Speech and Language Science, which is leading towards a speech um uh speech uh uh Language Pathology Programme. And Elsa Govaya and Richard Braithorne are also heroes, as is Professor Hubert Devonish. Thank you for continuing to keep the names coming. We have, we are spending a lot of effort supporting student wellness and student development. And I think this is one important way in which the institution is changing. And that is that we no longer assume that students come in, do their courses, go home and they'll be okay. We actually spending a lot of time thinking about how to make sure that our students are well. How to make sure also, by the way, that our staff are well, and I think it is a sign of the times, that this is something we're spending effort on. And so there are many initiatives um that support students in their academic development, but also in their mental health. And we hope, we intend these initiatives to help students build personal confidence as well as academic capacity. And this is especially important at a time that so many of our students are told that they are pursuing a degree that may not be all that useful. And your graduates know that this is not true. We've already heard it, that graduates of this faculty can be and are um successful, and that their skills and knowledge is absolutely um crucial and absolutely required in this twenty-first century. And I'm seeing some more heroes being named, Agri Brown, Zoya Clark, thank you. Keep them coming. Next. We also spend a lot of time supporting our graduate students and supporting research in the faculty. And one of the directions in which we are hoping to develop is to um do more collaborative work that again crosses disciplinary boundaries in research. Uh because this is how we support development in the region. And I see Liv- Doc- Dr Livingston White, Dr Patrick Prendergast uh being um named, thank you for that. Um and for those of you who are interested in the research that is taking place in the faculty, there is a research index of work that has come out of the faculty over the years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one. And if you go to our homepage and you click on the link for research, you can download that research index. Keep going. Thank you, Tina. Dr Earl Mackenzie is being named, thank you. Um Dr Earl Mackenzie, who is now retired. At the graduate level, some of our trends in programme development, the MA English Language has been revised with certificate options. One of the things, or is it diploma options, one of the things that the campus principal spoke to is that we are developing courses or course packages that are intended for lifelong learning for those who are not coming back to us for a degree, but want to come back to us for some courses and certificates. There is a new collaborative programme with the University of Lagos in Nigeria. Uh the uh MA African African Daps for Studies. The School of Education is developing around strategic areas of specialisation, and I will say a bit more about that in a minute. The Department of History and Archaeology has a brand-new MA Public History and Caribbean Heritage, which is going to be a very important programme for supporting the heritage sector. And we're increasing our presence in online programmes. Professor Jennings is another hero, thank you. Dr Francois Seve, Soyini Ashbe, great, thank you. So one of the things that sets the UW- the UWI apart is that we are an activist university and we specifically seek to have an impact in the region. And that impact is seen, for instance, when the School of Education focuses on the needs of teachers and of the educational sectors. There are so many workshops and trainings and initiatives coming out of the School of Education that I cannot possibly name all of them. But I'm just naming a few here. And they pertain specifically uh to the impact, the focus on behavioural problems with programmes such as a behavioural intervention programme, the Change From Within Programme and the Insights Programme. And I think really the School of Education has an unrivalled impact on the primary and secondary schools. And what is really, really important in all the initiatives that the school is taking is that it's not just about knowledge transfer, but it is about empowering and enabling those who participate in the workshops, whether they are teachers or parents um with new knowledge and new methodologies. Next. A project that we are really proud of is our UIMona Prison Project. This project began very small with a training for eight prisoners and two correctional officers. This is in the uh Tower Street um prison. Uh this is a project in which the participants earned a certificate in entertainment management. They were extremely enthusiastic and proud of the achievement. And we are hoping to um to see that this uh initiative can be made sustainable. This is a project that we really believe in and we want to keep it going. Um it started with outside funding. Let's see how we can make sure that it is sustainable. Another area of impact, yes, the next slide, um is coming from language activism. For instance, um the work of the Jamaican Language Unit has involved consultancy work that has resulted in uh the translation of the New Testament and currently work is going on on the Book of Genesis. There's a daily translation of the news, uh which is posted on the broadcast Jamaican new YouTube channel. Um there was a very uh high-profile uh involvement with the training of actors in the Bob Marley biopic. And yes, um Joseph, there is still a lot more to do. Um and uh you know, those are just a few examples of how the work of this faculty and the people in the faculty is having an impact in the region and representing interests of the region. Of course, uh thought leadership uh is made visible through all the uh various uh public events, whether it is conferences, public lectures uh and seminars. And um one of the things that we're hoping to do, since so many of our events are now uh offered in hybrid mode, is to make sure that we reach out to your alumni so that you can also participate in these events. And with that, I hope I have made you properly nostalgic uh to the faculty and to its wonderful courtyard. Uh of course, feel free, feel very welcome to visit, but we know that most of you are not in the vicinity. And so we're happy to see you online and we hope to keep this conversation going from the, for the long term. And with that, I hand back to the emcees.
Thank you so much, Dean Cohenberg. I know that you would have felt the energy behind this presentation. That the faculty is not just alive and well, but vibrant, teeming with energy. And it is really about your own getting involved. But yes, Dean, one of the important things you said was that communicating with our alumni will be central. And even the context of the the attendant list, uh the participant list for this Zoom. We will use the information to be able to communicate with you and to keep you in touch with what we are doing in the faculty. So now we're gonna change gears a little bit. And we're going to have a a fabulous series of presentations, insights from uh alumni of the faculty. In a panel discussion entitled Navigating the Future of the Humanities and Education, Alumni Insights on Career, Innovation and Lifelong Learning. Now, in the interest of time, I'm going to paste the bios inside of the chat and just really allow us to get into the conversation with these distinguished persons who have agreed to share with us this evening. So we're first going to hear from Mrs Nicolette Wright Black. She's president of the Alumni Association, the Jamaica chapter. And then Mr Gary Allen, many of you would know this name, big name in media. Group Senior Executive at the RGR Gleaner Communication Group. Then we're gonna hear from Mr Ainsworth Morris, journalist from the Gleaner Company. Doctor Tashane Haynes-Brown will follow. Lecturer, School of Education, the UWI Mona Campus. And then Mr Do- Doctor Charles Ball, lecturer in Psycho-Linguistics at Western Sydney University. I certainly hope it's the next day for you in Australia now, Charles, and that we are not keeping you away from your bed. So in that order, we will hear from our distinguished panelists. Over to you, Mrs Nicolette Wright Black.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr Mayo. Um it is really a pleasure to be here with you all. Um, not so well today, but I told myself I had to make sure I pushed through um for this because I'm very excited about the engagement, having spoken to Deputy Dean Carr about this town hall. And so I'm very, very happy, you know, to share with you all today and thank you for having me. Um, there's a lot to unfold. I'm not sure if you want us to go right into it as far as what we all have to say um about, you know, the topic at hand, or if you want to just have everyone getting their introductions in first.
Oh, please, go ahead with, with some of your contributions, perhaps. You can take two to three minutes or so. I'm not sure if you had a prepared set of um comments, you could just go into it.
Well, well, I did have some comments, to be honest, because I, I, there was a lot, I think, that um was already spoken about by the principal and some of the comments I saw that, you know, that were read out by um the alum, which made me very excited, obviously, um just to kind of share what, what I think the humanities has to offer in this very evolving space. Um, and you know, which I think provides obviously the bedrock um for, well, at least intellectual bedrock for everything that we do. So I want to share more so on, you know, the humanities being not just a pathway to a specific career, but a lifelong toolkit for navigating the complexity of the modern world. And I think that this could look like, you know, alumni-led initiatives, bringing digital storytelling to new audiences or applying critical storytelling, you know, and thinking to ethical challenges of artificial intelligence. You know, we are trying to create and obviously expand spaces where innovation meets humanity. And so you, the alum, I think, having had the front row, you know, seat to the experiences of university, learning and, and you know, even speaking about some of the heroes from, from the faculty, you know, you're uniquely positioned to lead in bringing the sort of historical perspective um and the ethical framework, I suppose, and the cultural understanding to these cottage, cutting-edge fields. This, I think, will be what we call intellectual innovation. And so there are a lot of aspects, I, I, I am very happy to hear, you know, just the level of engagement from the alum um about ways that they want to even contribute or even, you know, curious as to how they could contribute in this space. I think that um the alumni here is the living embodiment, I think, of the foundation or living proof that humanities prepares us for an ever-changing world, right? What we have learned in the classrooms and in discussions and debates and the process of intellectual discovery doesn't just stay there within the walls of academia, right? It's fueling the kind of careers we're hearing of persons being in PR and marketing and, you know, and other spheres that we didn't think, you know, realistically, that, that we would have um, uh the humanities, you know, leading the spaces with. So when we think about how we navigate that space, we're thinking about the different industries and fields, um ranging from business and education, tech startups, maybe nonprofits. Um, and perhaps in intersecting with law and other aspects, you know, to, to, to show you that the humanities degree is not a limit. It is literally empowering you to do every other aspect of, you know, how we, how we drive our, our future world, right? And um and obviously with problem solving and, you know, complex issues. And so I think that's what makes our alumni insights so valuable. Because like I said, they would have had the experience of learning certain things and now being able to hone those skills to pivot in new spaces. And, you know, I, I'm truly happy to see how we can network that and navigate that in, 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 in the coming days. Um, yes.
Awesome.
Do I continue? I don't know if I should continue, but.
No, please, if you have more to say.
Right, so it, it was just more so, you know, trying to bridge how we can um use some of those experiences and, you know, lead the innovation, creating something new about how we rethink um opportunities for, 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 for the future world, reimagining the world and shaping the future that we, you know, we want to have, that space that will make us much more useful in this new um age, I sup- I suppose, industrial age. And that, I think, obviously would be through a lot of alumni engagement and perhaps, you know, alum coming to mentor, coming to connect uh with the faculty um and the university at large, you know, in trying to help current students navigate that space and creating new opportunities. So yes, for now, I mean, I can, I can stop there.
Thank you so much, um Nicolette. All right, so perhaps we move on to Mr. Gary Allen now to hear some of his thoughts, some of, some of his insights on career innovation and lifelong learning. Do we have Gary online?
I saw him earlier, he was in, um.
Uh.
I am, I am in.
Yes. All right.
Okay. The tyranny of, of the unmute buttons and navigating screens. Um, in my time at Karmak, that was not one of the things that um we had to, to, to deal with at all. So there, there's quite a bit that can be said and um obviously I'd like to identify with a lot of the um comments about the importance of this session and um how valuable it is to us. And what I'd like to do is probably run very quickly through how I thought about the, the presentation, looking at navigating the future of the humanities and education and the insights, trying to present some kind of insight by being retrospective, a little bit retrospective, and then looking at where things are going, because it is indeed um lifelong learning that we have been engaged in. And, and I, I hope that when I run through these things, we will see. So I'm one of those persons who joined the industry in nineteen eighties. And um in the nineteen eighties, we had a, a lot to talk about in terms of communication. Not just in Jamaica, but globally, there was a lot of discussion going on. Uh, if we think back at the technologies of the nineteen eighties, as um those of us involved in media, coming into the University of the West Indies, coming into the, the faculty. Um, many people today don't understand some of the things, my children don't know some of the technologies I'm talking about, the use of CB radios and VHF radios, I'm talking about phone booths, talking about ICAS, the International Call Authorization System, the introduction of the cellphone, yes, the, the cellphone was not always here. Uh, the experience that we have had with the explosion of the cellphones globally and how the discipline of the humanities prepared us for dealing with that and what are the challenges for us going forward. Uh, I heard um Dean talk earlier about the um use of English and yes, use of English was one of those subjects that we had to do at, at Karmak and in preparation of that. And there are many of us who lament today whether or not our vocation is benefiting as we did from the use of English programs that we had there. And um now you ask yourself, with where we are going, is it as critical as it used to be? Because now, um even, even speaking different languages, you are speaking English into a cellphone. I saw one of my engineers with someone from Germany the other day, um who was setting up something here for us. And he had a question, he spoke it into his cellphone, into an app, and um it came out in German and the German engineer responded in, in German and it came out in English. So at that time, when we entered, we were trying to do all the things to prepare ourselves for this great world where we were talking about the big debate of the New World Information and Communications Order. Well, are we on the cusp of a different New World uh Information and Communications Order? And what is the role of our faculty in preparing a new set of, of, of graduates for that world? That strikes me from the nineteen eighties as a big ask for us and how do we get to a different place in, in, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and beyond? The nineteen nineties was a period that was driven by a lot of telecommunications expansion. And if we remember, the whole thing of liberalization uh accelerated there and the convergence of technologies at the time was something that was, was a big issue in our industry. Divestment of state-owned media, the Jamaica Broadcasting Corporation, um to um a private interest was one of the big things in our industry. But at the same time, the government also owned shares in Radio Jamaica Private Endeavor and it sold its shares to um mass organizations such as trade unions, churches, um uh, you know, teachers' associations and so on. Uh, that led to a new set of entrepreneurial skills coming into our industry. Uh, those were things that were part of the debate that we had then. Today, we have to prepare ourselves for the debate of what is, is this new convergence that is taking place with the newer technologies? How are we going to navigate this space? We look back to the nineties, there were some missteps, there were some challenges, but we made it through. How are we preparing ourselves to move through um this type of dramatic change, even more dramatic than the nineties, that we had to do? I jump into the two thousands and yes, there was convergence now between telecommunications, the computer industry and the media industry. That level of communication now was, of, of convergence now was bringing communication to a new and different level. The departure of the Kipling Wireless Monopoly, the opening up of a new space, um content development changed, acquisition of content um by certain entities in a new space within, within the industry was something that was new. The satellite technologies and how we use them, all of those things were new. Today, we have to look at that and see how we are preparing ourselves. Yes, there is now a new satellite technology that is before us. Mr. Musk has um thousands of, of um satellite dishes hovering closer to the Earth's atmosphere than before in order to give us a different type of technology. Yes, there is media usage um of telecoms platforms and so on that is helping us to advance ourselves. How are we preparing our students to analyze, how are we looking as professionals at the connection that needs to take place between the industry and the university in terms of trying to meet the functional needs and match the disciplines of that going forward? And then if I jump to the twenty tens, that was when we saw the explosion of the World Wide Web and everything that came with that, the development of broadband, OTT platforms, um Netflix and Hulu and others were in their infancy. And in Jamaica and the Caribbean, once, but media was also among those OTT platforms. We started to learn new things, um we built on the foundation of what we learned at Karmak from many of the people who Dean had in the pictures and how to apply a lot of the theory and the rigor of the analysis that they brought. How are we helping now to mold the generation of students who are at the university in this faculty to be empowered and equipped as we were to be able to do the same thirty, forty years on from here? What are the, the skills that we need to help? What, what is the impact on creativity and innovation? And what is the impact on standards that we have to contemplate and discuss as alumni with the university about what we want to see in the workforces that we are developing and we are in charge of and how are we going to do that? And finally, we come to the twenty twenties. And of course, uh there is a little bit of challenge in the twenty twenties in how some people think about artificial intelligence. It is the thing that has dominated our space. Is it a tool of innovation? Is it impacting creativity or is it something that is creating tremendous um paralysis? How are we going to use the skills that we honed early on in the last forty years? How am I responding to AI now? Have I future-proofed my own thinking and, and positioning of how I will survive for the next how many years I have in terms of a professional career? How are we going to help others to navigate that space? What do we want from our university to help us equip others, go forward with this? I think that those are the things I want us to think about as alumni and as a university, because they will carry us through an industry and a country and globally in terms of how it is we'll be able to navigate this space.
Thank you very much, Gary. I think your, your remarks underscored for us the way in which the seventy-five years of the humanities uh faculty that we can think about at UW I in particular. Those seventy-five years, those are years that we have seen tremendous transformation, uh certainly in technology, but those transformations have required interdisciplinary responses. And that's something to really and truly consider, how it is the faculty as a space of preparation uh can help us with this whole idea of, of, of the graduate that is fit for purpose. So let's move on now to Mr. Ainsworth Morris. Uh, and of course, if you haven't been checking, I've been pasting the bios in the chat.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. So to add on what Mr. Allen has just presented, as I think on the topic for discussion and more specifically the phrase, alumni insights on career innovation and learning, sorry, on, and lifelong learning. One thing comes to mind, that is, technology and innovation cause career options to change each day. AI, for example, has taught us that the need for a writer like myself can be eliminated in a second and a computer can generate a full report, which would take someone like myself minutes. This, I believe, is crucial for us as an example to discuss and educate our youth about becoming more open to change and adjusting their career lives and lifestyle when it requires of them to do so. I also believe AI has in and of itself become a major life lesson for us and it's something that our students in the humanities faculty need to understand better. Because computers, they are a challenge for us, although we are the persons who build them. And they can affect our career and our lifelong experiences and what we can achieve or not. As a younger person in this virtual room and someone who started working nineteen years ago, which was, sorry, started working at the age of nineteen, which was fourteen years ago, I have witnessed the transformation of the communication sector with the advancement of social media and it's becoming a killer for print, which is what I write for and many persons from humanities will want to write for as well. I have witnessed print becoming less of a demand and social, social media becoming more dominant and added more to the daily lifelong lessons and experiences for everyone. And I believe with research from the university, this can help our future generation and our current generation to prepare themselves for the world of work and the choices that they can make with regards to having careers that are uplifting and satisfying for them. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you so much, uh Ainsworth. This is, so, so building on Gary's presentation, you have taken us not just to AI now, but to understand the social impact of things like social media. And, and that's a, that's a big, that's a big, big thing. I think many of us, ten years ago, we didn't have any clue about what would have been the onslaught of this social media. And, and I think we are still unprepared for it. We are seeing landmark cases, for example, in, in Europe, in the United States. Uh, we, we have to grapple with these as a, as a, as a region and more so as a university and, 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 and importantly, as a faculty. So let's move on to Dr. Tashane Haines-Brown.
Thanks for having me. Good evening, everyone. So I'm a proud graduate. I would have done my undergraduate degree, master's and PhD with the School of Education. And so I join with the many persons who would let you know that we have one of the best departments and faculties around in the Caribbean. And we know we are in a space now where there is a challenge with education, not just because of the different behavioral issues and the performance challenges, but we also know that there is. But we also know that there is a stark decline, a significant decline in the number of persons who choose. Teaching or even a degree in education, especially at the undergraduate level. We are having a serious challenge. Getting persons to choose teaching. So when you ask the question, who wants to teach? If you ask a group of sixth formers, who wants to teach? You know you're going to hear, boy, the students are too challenging. They're too difficult. And so as we think about the future of education and what can we do with an education degree. We know that we have to begin to pivot in terms of how we prepare our teachers. And also acknowledge that for many, teaching is no longer a lifelong career. We know that the studies out there show us today that persons change careers at least five times. And we're seeing that trend happening even in education. You have a student contributing to a particular level of education for five or ten years and then they wish to move on. So what that mo- means for us in education is that we have to begin to think about micro credentialed in. We also have to begin to think about how do we reach the students? Who are not able to give up their jobs wherever they live. We have parishes in Jamaica such as Saint Anne, Saint Thomas. Westmoreland, where we don't have a physical campus and we have very limited ways of reaching those persons. And perhaps this is where a lot of our teachers may come from that group of persons. Who are unable to give up the jobs that they are currently in to come in for a full-time degree. I remember years ago, as I reflect, when I wanted to do my bachelor in education. I did it online and back then the technology was simply a chat. You were able, you joined the live session and you had to type in this little chat section. That's all we had. There was no face to face. You couldn't see anybody and we had those manuals and so on that you picked up from the school campus. And you would go back home to Trelawney, wherever you lived, and you simply joined the class on time to type in the chat and engage with the materials. Right now, we have so much technology at our disposal that there must be a better way. To reach the students who are in other places, who may be interested in a degree in education. But just are unable to make it to our campus here. So we have to think about more of that and I'm also thinking about the fact that people want micro credentials. We want short courses. We know our learners are very different. They don't necessarily want to be there for three years, right? And we heard the campus principal talking about a lot of those kinds of programs. And so I know that for the School of Education, these are some of the considerations that we are bearing in mind. I love the fact that the School of Ed is one that does a lot of collaboration. Because when AI came out, we were a part of that drive. As you would have seen from the dean's presentation, one of the things that I've always loved about the School of Education is our outreach. We are always trying to reach others and as an alum, that was how I also became more interested. In the things in the education department, because they were always reaching out. There was always a workshop. There was always a session. Recently, we completed a series of workshops on AI and education. And even the ministry would have recognized our efforts there. And in collaboration with the humanity, with the Faculty of Science and Technology, we are now being funded to do a program. That will allow for greater professional development. So as an educator, I think the direction we have to head into is more lifelong learning. And finding new ways of engaging and thinking about a career in education. We may not get a teacher for twenty years, but we can have persons giving back to education. Through accepting that we may have persons will give five or ten years to teaching and then they will move on. So they would want to know. How can my degree be something that I build on that takes me further? So I really think when we think about the future of education, these are some of the issues that we must contend with.
All right. Thank you so much, uh Tashine. Always a pleasure to hear you. Uh our final presenter, uh Doctor Charles Ball.
Okay, I think this is on a, um, can you hear me, Dr. Sanalaya?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you so much. And good evening to everybody um who is uh connecting this evening. And thanks to everyone who has contributed so far. Special shout out to Mrs. Nicole, right, my um fellow alumni ambassador. Um, hi, Doctor Varnett. Um I'm so happy to 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 be here this evening. I'm actually um at the airport. I'm coming from a speech language conference in Melbourne. So if you hear noises and announcements, please excuse me. I'm heading back to Sydney currently. Um I won't go over what has been said so far. Because it's really on point and I did have some of the same um points to make as well. I'm just going to comment. Perhaps a bit on my own journey and to say that I didn't know my sense of who I wanted to be and what I could do. Until I actually started at UE, you know, because for example, through high school, um at that school, we were all encouraged. Go for the sciences, you know, it 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 didn't to be doctors and this and et cetera. And I thought that's what I wanted to do because that's what people were telling me to do, but I I couldn't do mathematics. I was poor at physics. I was terrible at chemistry, but I knew I had something for the arts. And so wh- when I started UE, I actually, in a rule in the linguistics program, I didn't even know what linguistics was, honestly. You know, but I just somehow knew that that's exactly what I wanted to do. And so I stand up for that. And that's where I flourished because I was given the tools to see the world from a different um lens. And also to engage in things um such as the 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 Spanish language and theater festivals. And all kinds of different things that I didn't even know I had the ability to do. And so um where I'm actually going with this is for the innovation in the humanities. To prepare our graduates as global citizens, so to actually compete on a global level. Because I did my bachelor's at UE, but I did my master's in Spain and in the Netherlands in Spanish. Wrote my master's thesis in Spanish and even did better than native Spanish speakers, you know? And then um relocated here now to to Australia after teaching in UE. Um um for some time in the language programs in Spanish and in writing, et cetera. And al- also in in linguistics. And the one thing I I am really thankful for is the level of knowledge and experience again and also the teaching experience. Because that's actually what has kept me afloat in Australia right now, is that people are always calling on me to teach classes in all kinds of subjects. Because I had a really solid foundation and people always ask me, what has been your favorite teaching experience? And I would always tell them, UE, one hundred percent. There is no teaching experience I've had that is better. Than teaching our own students at the U W I and Mona. And I just um completed a PhD in psycholinguistics. I had never even heard of psycholinguistics until my own wife, who's also a very proud U W I graduate, um who is on here as well, Tina. Um we both did our PhDs in psycholinguistics at Western Sydney University. I did not know what psycholinguistics was until she got into that program, you know? And the one thing that actually helped us to accomplish what we did. Was our ability to pick things up really quickly and to push ahead and to, you know, overcome all kinds of challenges. Now, where the innovation, I think, really needs to be put front and center concerning what what we do at UE. Um is where we need to be looking at how to collaborate across faculties. And also to train our graduates to to understand and know the other fields linked to what they're studying currently, right? So for example, we have a very good and robust um linguistics program and foreign languages program as well. However, when I got into my program to do my PhD, I was required to do a lot of programming, right? As in programming in 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 R, in in Python, in MATLAB. I'm like, what on earth are those things? Right? I had never heard of these things, but it was an essential part of actually completing the degree. Because you have to learn how to design experiments because it is psychology, it's psychology of language, right? We have to do a whole range of statistical analyses as well. The whole thesis I wrote, the whole three hundred and six pages. It's all statistics and I knew nothing about statistics coming out of my program. Um that is either at UE or in in Spain or the Netherlands. But somehow I was able to pick up these things and then to push forward to accomplish this great thing. And I think if anything i- in my very brief talk is to say, one, we need to see what are those areas? That are, you know, on the perhaps the periphery of the programs that we have. And see now, okay, how can we collaborate across faculties and with different um institutions? To prepare our graduates to go into those other fields as well. And also to ensure that we know what we have and to sell it a- accordingly, you know? Um, thank you, Mai Te, because I did not know that I could have written a thesis in Spanish. And I wrote that entire thesis in twenty-five days and I scored nine out of ten. You know, it is, it was absolutely unbelievable, but there was something that had been planted in me from my days at UE. That gave me the ability to just pick up things really quickly and to see things from a different perspective in terms of, I'm not just being prepared for UE or Jamaica. Or the Caribbean, but I'm actually able to compete on a global level with speakers who are native speakers of those languages. And I can do as well as or even better than them. So I think in rounding up, I would just say, we need to um focus on. What are the opportunities for cross pollination in terms of preparing or graduates? Not just in the 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 humanities, but also in psychology, in social sciences, et cetera. As a matter of fact, no, most of my teaching is in social sciences, you know? And nothing is wasted or students need to know that whether they're they're actually taking courses, you know, in philosophy or this thing or that thing. None of it is wasted because I have no teaching courses on ethics, which is very heavily philosophy based, very heavily theory based. And finally, the major disadvantage, quote unquote, I saw. Within myself as a graduate was that I didn't have publications. I was competing against students with bachelor's degrees only. Who had two or three publications coming out of that. We need to look at ways to engage our graduates. To help them to produce what can actually be published and um in so doing, position them as really, um, you know. Um, what's the word? I forgot the word, I'm sorry. Um but to put them in the position where they can say, okay, I have research experience. Not just any writing essays for assignment purposes, but I have actually produced something that is at a. At an 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 international level that can compete with other people as well. And I thank God for Professor Paulie Ramsey, who was the first person at the U W I in the Department of Modern Languages. And um li- literature, who um actually convinced me. And gave me the opportunity and the outlet to actually produce a publication. And that was what was instrumental in me getting my PhD scholarship as well. So UE is for the world. It is Caribbean based, UE, Mona, F H E, Jamaica based. But we are supposed to be having a global outlook and I thank God that we actually do and we're actually producing world-class writers. I'm gonna stop talking now because I feel like I'm going all the place. Um just that, thank you, because I'm really tired from a very long week. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Charles. Um at that, that, I mean, I really appreciate your your contribution and and clearly. Um we feel the energy and the excitement. Um the 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 you have pointed us to, you know, uh looking again at. What what kind of foundation we're providing here and certainly, as you've said, I mean, this is a solid foundation. Um preparing you for and a kind of an all-round engagement with 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 note the points around. Um innovation and cross-faculty collaboration, um certainly interdisciplinary approach to 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 study and to teaching. And I think you've made a a a real um important point in relation to encouraging our students to. To engage in in in, you know, in it publishing. Um, uh because we 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 see the value of that i- within the academy. Uh but it is something that we we have to, we have to encourage, we have to be deliberate around about. The i- in the comments, we've we've seen everybody, you know, talking about how inspiring um these presenters have been. So I I I want to just back up a little and 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 say thanks to 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 Nicolet and to Gary and to Ainsworth and to Sheen. Uh and certainly Charles for for, you know, for bringing some some insights to 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 this, to this particular. Um topic, you know, alumni insights on career innovation and lifelong learning. There are some, there there w- 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 who want to, who want to hear, who want to give um others an opportunity to. To respond to what they have heard. So what we're going to do is uh o- open up the floor a a little bit. We are running a little behind time, but it's fine because this is supposed to be a town hall meeting. Um and so what we're going to do is to allow others to to speak to some of the things they have heard. And and certainly um to bring their own insights to bear upon upon the evening. Uh we're we're going to ask that you, you know, you, we're not going to give you the entire evening to. To 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 make a presentation. We appreciate the the input uh and the contributions. So we want to allow, uh but we want to allow as many of you as possible to to share with us. So um let's let's hear from from others in response to these very, very inspiring and and enlightening. Uh presentations. Rochelle?
Thank you very much, uh Dr. Pendergast. Um so I just wanted to kind of talk about what um Dr. Ball said as well. So I graduated from the Department of Linguistics and Language Education. Really, I did a double degree in that and graduated in twenty fourteen. And I love to see the energy that everybody has regarding speech therapy because now I'm a practicing speech language pathologist. And that is because of what I learned in linguistics. And now I'm working as a medical speech pathologist. So I'm using what I've learned about language itself to help people who are recovering from stroke. I'm using that to help um children sometimes as well and it just would not be possible without the background. And really just working with Prof. Cohenberg, Dr. Kennedy, so many people who are on this meeting right now. And I'm just wanting to add my voice to that, to say that it would not have been possible without being like an alumni of. Faculty of Humanities and Education. And um then moving on to how it is where I did my speech pathology degree. And it was just the same in terms of being a critical thinker and lots of comments about, you know. Where did you learn to do this? That was like, that was from UE and it was just a great thing to see and to do and it's helping me know in my job. And so I'm enjoying that and I just wanted to lend my voice to that, to say thank you to Prof., to everybody for what you've been doing. Um and to definitely lend the voice to know that you guys are producing some world-class alumni and graduates. And it's been really helpful to um be a part of what I do now.
Thank you very much, Rochelle, for sharing. Um Sid- Sidney?
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief because I have to go myself. Um, just listening to everyone and feeling so wonderful, you know, about this idea that of the impact. That graduates of humanities that we're making all over the world. Um, we hear a lot, humanities is dead, the liberal arts is dead. But listening to these conversations and even thinking about it from a more deeper perspective. Everything that's going on in the the world now that's moving the world to this great modernization, AI, the focus on STEM, social media. It has a basis in humanities. To give you an example, Dr. Naya, there is a social media page. Called Know Your Caribbean. And, you know, this young lady who is from Martinique, she does a lot of. Very interesting videos about Caribbean history and it reminds me so much of the course I did with you in Caribbean Cultural Studies. So, you know, content that's being produced on social media, it has the basis in humanities. I believe as alumni, as alumni, if we're engaged and Dr. Pendigrass, please engage me. I think the people at Caramac have my email address. Reach out. We can begin to become that voice to help prospective and current students connect the dot. Connect the dots for them in the sense we can show them that there is more to the humanities. It is not dead. There's more to the humanities that they believe. If we're talking about STEM, who's going to analyze the data for the people? That's the work I do now. I work with a group of actuaries who they cannot write. I am their writer. I brand them. I package them. I write their content from. I am their writer, I brand them, I package them, I write their content from their mathematical calculations. So we can begin to expose them to the whole new world of what humanities has to offer, right? Yes, you're gonna do what Caramac is gonna do, what they need to do, the faculty is gonna do what they need to do, the university is going to do what they need to do to make sure the programs are available. But the humanities graduate themselves, they're gonna have to think of their space, think of their skills, begin to marry the two together. And I feel like alumni can help them to do that, we can guide them and show them the possibilities that are out there. For how they can connect the dots to find a place for themselves, careers for themselves. Uh, we talk about the situation of crime and violence in Jamaica and now I'm hearing the conversation about values and attitudes. I believe that education and the Department of Education has a huge role to play in that, they can make contribution. It's it's our teachers who are connecting with children from an earlier stage to understand what's going on psychologically, emotionally and behaviorally. To kind of impact that conversation, you know, I don't want to go on much longer.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm looking forward to the engagement. I want to come and talk about what my degree, my two degrees in humanities have done for me and what it can do for other people.
And this is, this is important, I mean, you're you you you're, you know, um, underscoring the point made earlier in terms of branding. But not just branding, but also positioning and certainly um responding to to the, to to what we're saying as a faculty that, you know, you're you're out there, we need your help. Um, we need your engagement and certainly we will keep, we will keep in touch.
Yeah, we've been too quiet for too long.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm not so sure in terms of the order anymore, but Dean, it w- w- would you want to respond to anything you've heard so far? Or is that a new, a new hand?
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone to either copy the link that I posted in the chat or to copy the image in the chat that um connects you to the form. Um, we don't want to send, you know, get in touch, we we need to know how to get in touch with you, how to stay in touch with you. Um, and I think, you know, the effort to bring you together, a lot of that was one-on-one outreach. So we really need to get a good mailing list going. So please, um, just complete that form and if you don't have the time to do it now, just um uh uh save that little image with the Q R code in it and you can do it later on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dean. Jordan?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to kind of uh gi- give a first a thank you for um putting this together, I found it very informative, thank you Sylvia for reaching out. But I want to also echo something that Hammond said, I'm sorry, I'm just going by your name, but it's like your actual name. But I think it's gonna be really critical if we're gonna grow the department and if we're gonna instill that values for the alumni is really to show how. When you get a degree from humanities and education, it's not just that practical knowledge that you're applying, but you are, you actually get a lot of transferable skills. I did my degree in linguistics. Um, I was fortunate to have professors like Prof. Cohenberg and Prof. Devnich and Dr. Kennedy. That really helped me to see that linguistics wasn't limited. I was able to work in radio, in public relations, in franchising, um, in project management. And I was able to negotiate all of those different fields through transferable skills. Um, and so I think helping the next generation of graduates, um, or the future generation of graduates. To see the connections between what they're studying and the skills they're learning and how it applies to various um professional designations. Will also help us to sell or market the programs a little bit better. But thank you for this, I I really am encouraged by it and I'd love to continue to be involved in any way I can, thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Um, Erica? Um, Erica seemed not to be there. Um, Dr. Hardett Gendels?
Yes, hi, I just wanted to uh interject um with sort of an an announcement, but I think something that also celebrates uh new directions for the Faculty of Humanities and Education. Which is that we last week, we launched our steps challenge where we've encouraged all our stakeholders to join and to walk every day, log their steps. And I'm very pleased to announce that our uh weekly winner is Dr. Dex, Dr. Dexnell Peters. Um, who has logged an average, this is an average, for the last seven days of eighteen thousand steps. So, you know, big him up and just to say that this is a new direction that we're also moving in to be healthy and fit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, uh, I'm big up, big up to the steppers, uh, as we would say. Um, this, this, this is an important challenge, um, you know, for for wellness a- as well. So Dr. Peters, um, uh, but Dr. Kim says, Dr. Peters is using A I, of course. Erica, I think you've sorted your headset now, so, um, your turn.
Hello, good afternoon, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, Erica, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for this town hall meeting. It was really refreshing. So what I'd like to say quickly is that I did the B A and the M A, the M A L I S in Library and Information Studies. And so I'm currently in terms of my occupation, a librarian. And what I found is that the the degrees that I did helped me to branch out in different ways. So it's not just librarianship, but also in other areas. So when I, I think my area though that I would really like to probably focus on, and I think one of the presenters alluded to it. And that is the era of research and development. I find that I don't really write. So I'll be focusing on assignments, focusing on my tasks, but in terms of writing, that's an era of weakness. And I think in terms of what I would be able to offer for persons who are undergraduate students. If there are opportunities to mentor and maybe that will also help me to want to push forward in terms of my writing. Thank you.
Charles, are you still there? I mean, you're you're hearing, you want to, you want to give a response to that or um Dr. Hines Brown? Go ahead, Charles.
Um, yes, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I would.
Um, Samsung, is that, I'm, I'm, is that? Is it Rochelle? Is that Rochelle?
If that's the Samsung, I'm sorry for a moment, I wasn't muted, sorry about the noise, but I did have my hand up, sorry about that.
Okay, hold, we'll, we'll, I'll come right back to you. Um, um, go ahead, Dr. Ball.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, really quick comment is that, um, there are actually outlets within U E where people can actually collaborate. And actually get their foot in the door with writing and publishing. So just for example, I don't know if it still exists, but the U V Quality Edic, Quality Education Forum Journal. Um, I don't know if it's still around, but that's actually where I got my first um publication from. And it was actually a book review, right? So there are actually outlets within U W I where if you speak to the right people, they can point it to them. Second thing is, when Covid hit and I was tired of my PhD and 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 all the analysis, et cetera. I actually came together with um some other graduate students at my university who were also doing PhDs. And we looked through the newspaper and we realized that the reportage concerning um elders in Australia. You know, it was that they're old and they're frail and, you know, Covid's gonna kill them soon, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what we did was actually to collect several articles, read through them and actually write up an analysis of how news houses in Australia are talking about old people or or older people with regard to Covid nineteen. And we actually published that, you know? So I would say, look around you, find people who have similar interests, talk to your lecturers, those who are actually actively publishing. And thank you, Kasia, um, the Q E F is still active. So there are all these outlets that you can actually use. Um, but primarily, students need guidance because writing for publication purposes is a totally different ballgame. It's a horse of a totally different color. And so mentorship in that space is needed. And I think that is where, you know, we need to guide our student into, um, you know, from the very outset to prepare them to write for. Uh, uh, you know, scholarly outputs and to help to 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 guide them through that journey because it is really needed. And if we're gonna produce world-class, um, people who who can actually compete on an international level for publications and, you know, PhD scholarships, et cetera. There needs to be some kind of output, so that's one way to start. And there are other ways now that the faculty might be able to 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 come in and help us with some mentorship as to how to get that done.
I would like to add something if that's possible, yes?
Sure, go ahead, Shane.
Um, I would want to echo those sentiments that mentorship and a targeted approach is important. And that's one of the things that I also love about my experience with the School of Education. One of the innovations, I like the way how the School of Ed will think about innovation, innovating in such a way that it's a part of the courses and programs. So one of the programs, one of the courses that we developed in the School of Ed was applied research. And the final output is actually a publication type paper, right? And coming out of that course, we ended up having actually a edited book, right? Where several students who would have completed their masters in education would have partnered with lecturers to publish their papers in a book, right? So I know that this is something that I think the faculty has recognized and we are not just doing it um through mentorship. But it is becoming a part of the kind of streamlined approach. And so I know a lot of students who would have come out of the masters in education, who did applied research, were able to publish their papers, not just in that edited book. But in our journals locally. So I really think that, you know, that's something that is critical that we are already pushing ahead with that I'm proud of.
Thank you for that. Um, Samsung, is it, I I'm trying to remember if you had said your name is Rachel, Rochelle?
No, it's actually Sean or Murray.
Murray, thank you.
Yes, yes, all right. We're getting a lot of regard in publication, innovation. Um, but let's connect it to two of the, one of the initial performance, the whole idea of branding. Because individuals such as myself who are not as involved, universities are not as involved with the academic community. We look for material from our local, I mean, but we tend to be finding material more from individuals who are overseas. So branding, sir, is is crucial and and putting these uh products out there so that others can know outside of the university library. Which takes me to my second comment and I'll finish quickly. Um, a lot of alumni tend to be gatekeepers. And I think that mindset is what prevents the branding from the innovation from showing as much as it should. Uh, I tend to separate schooling from education. Schooling is not really supposed to lead us to our gatekeeping, what we have experienced. But it's supposed to help us to open broader doors to others, to have that kind of experience. And so, A, the alumni also has a responsibility to help the university to see. My initial point was was really supported by the last, the two last panelists. To see where there are opportunities for others who need to to access higher schooling. Um, and who do not want to fit in the, into our, who cannot really fit into the whole la mode. So the whole idea, sir, mentioned about micro credentialed, very important. The micro credentialed that the University of West Indies has now is at a lower level. There are people who need it at a higher level. And finally, I'm reinforcing the point, so many people speak of this quote this evening about lifelong learning. But are we serious about it really? Or is it just something we say because it sounds good? Because the alumni now needs to get the university to understand that lifelong learning incorporates solid skills that individuals gain on the job. I end with a comment I read many years ago in nineteen eighty seven, actually, and if I was not like me, I never checked to see Albert Einstein really studied. But I have kept it in heart. It says, education is that which remains after one has forgotten all that one has learned in school. If we really consider that the experiences of individuals, listening to everybody on the panels speak, their experiences really connected to what they learned in school. There are others who have these experiences over and over time and connected to so much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Shauna. I think, I think the 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 only way we're going to know if we're really serious about it or we're just talking because it's 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 sweet talk. Um, i- is for you to look to see uh wh- wh- what are the outcomes, particularly of this, from this um exercise. But also um to take note of what the dean has mentioned, um, the 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 others have mentioned, the principal would have mentioned in terms of the direction. Uh, we we speak about agility, but we also want to be very, very responsive um in making sure that we're aligned with how we create new access, how we treat with the new technologies. How we um um, you know, allow for true innovation to take place. Uh, so so it's really a matter of looking to see and being there as a a kind of a, um, and uh uh, let's say, follow, monitor. Uh, uh, that's, that's an important role that we all have to play as as alumni. To 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 really and truly stop, uh, reflect, uh, give your own insights. Uh, and and to, and to basically to say, hi, you know, here is another way we could be looking at something. And a lot of that has been coming out um at this evening. A lot of people are are saying that they're strapped for time. We did say that we wanted to have this within two hours. Um, so what I'm going to do um is 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 ask, you know, Nicollet to to just probably make a final point. You mentioned the fact that, you know, it's alumni engagement like this, uh, that would be critical to to rethinking those opportunities. Uh, I I want, I want you to make a a final comment uh as we, as we wrap uh this this particular session. Uh, and then I'm going to ask Gary to to do likewise. Particulars relates Gary to to what's happening in terms of the 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 technological transformation and how that um could be used to shape uh a future uh offerings. Whether that is a a academic or in in the in the world of practice. Um.
Oh, so.
Nicollet?
Yes, cer- certainly, Dr. Pendergast, I I just want to reiterate a point that was made earlier, which is the fact that, um. She, I know, I know Ms. Murray was asking about whether it's a sweet talk or, you know, if it's very serious about it. But a lot of the issues that people have when we think about alumni is that they think they have to come and give back some money. As opposed to other ways that they can come and 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 support um students and the and the community. It's, we we spoke about the mentorship, we spoke about other ways in guiding students, um, where your career has taken you to kind of open up um the gauntlet for where, what what o- other opportunities are available. It's being serious about giving your support in that way, in 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 solid ways that are gonna be i- impacting current students. And and so that it becomes a generation or a cycle of continuing to develop with other persons coming to give back, right? Um, so it really just all, it it take that effort, you know, of of what you, Ms. Murray and other alums are saying, you know, you're serious about doing it. What we're happy to see happen with with this session, for example. Um, so we're essentially at a crossroads, you know, it's a call to action, essentially. This whole um town hall serves as that call to action to to to, you know, energize us to say, yes, we want to see the best happen. We have benefited from the quality education at the university. And we've seen the ways that we've gone to various fields, emerging fields, things, fields that we didn't think were 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 traditionally for um for for the humanities. But we've, you know, embarked upon this transformative journey and we want to ensure that this continues to help the the faculty and university at large.
Thank you very much and um we're going to 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 give uh the last word, so to speak, to to Gary.
Thank you very much and thanks to everyone for their participation today. I hope that um it was clear from from all that was said, that there is a lot that we have to offer. Um, it was clear from, from all that was said, that there is a lot that we have to offer. Uh, and there is a lot of need out there and our goal is to try and match the, the um offer. And experiences to fulfill the needs that are there. I think that sometimes we can get a little bit um concerned, too concerned about how we'll be able to do it. I think that there can be many avenues and many options if we make ourselves um available in different ways. And if we make our experiences available in different ways, I think that it can help to move us forward. And once we're moving forward, it might not be the, the perfect um approach that, that each person thinks it, it ought to be. But if it's moving forward, then the trend is right. I, I sat here thinking that there is a place for a Faculty of Humanities podcast series. That um would just allow us to build up a, a bank of experiences that people have. That we can draw from Atlanta and Sydney and Jamaica and New York and wherever people are. To be able to contribute to helping others to see what we have seen with more time on our side. I think that what the technologies have done is to open our eyes to the fact that the technologies are the technologies. That whether it's satellite technology, whether it's internet protocol technology, whether it's artificial intelligence. Uh, the technologies can only put out what is substantive in it. And that is what I think the Faculty of Humanities and Education is all about. It is what do we put in the pipe after the technologists create all of the platforms? At the end of the day, when you turn on the pipe, what is going to flow from that? And that is what we are contributing. Um, and I think that we should make no, no bones about making people know. That that contribution is the real deal and therefore it requires a symbiosis between the technology. And the humanities, it's not STEM, um, it's not steam only, it's the combination of the two. That is going to get us to a well-rounded place because an extreme of one or the other. Is not in the best interest of the combined. And I think that this whole exercise has made me see that more clearly. And I hope it has done that for others. And if that has been accomplished, I think that we have had a good session and I thank you for inviting me.
Really think that, that's a, 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 a very good summary. And I mean, um, on which to, 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 to end. Um, this, this engagement, I, I, I want to say, um, based, be- be- based on the turnout, this was really wonderful. We were at one point, I think, um, up to about a hundred and seventy. I may have missed the, the number there. A lot of people have been kind of just dropping off quickly. While you're going off though, I wanted to just indicate if you, if you, if you, um, will what. Um, what department within the faculty you, 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 you would have, uh, been a part of. The dean has already reminded you that there are some documents, some forms for you to complete. Please do so. Um, because we, we really want to keep this, this engagement going. Um, there, there, there are lots of other activities coming up and we want to also, uh, make you aware of those. But I'm pretty sure that everybody here would want me to not only thank the, the, the panel. Um, that was pulled together for this particular part of the discussion, but to thank, um, our smiling. Uh, uh, Ms. Susheta Stevenson for really organizing this. And with all the help that she would have received, um, from the deputy deans responsible for this kind of engagement. Um, so thank you, Susheta. Thank you, Deputy Deans responsible for, for this event. Um, we want to thank, uh, all the, 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 the heads of departments and, and, and directors of the various schools. Within the Faculty of Humanities for your support. We want to thank all the, the, the academic administrative, technical and support staff. For making this, um, evening possible. Uh, and of course, we want to thank the, 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 the principal. And, and our, uh, dean, Professor Koinberg for, you know, uh, kind of. Not only just contextualizing, but helping to, to carry the discussion um online. Uh, bringing the energy and, and the forward thinking to bear upon the, the exercise this evening. And we want to thank each and every one of you for really taking the time out to, to engage with us. We look forward to the collaboration. We, we look forward to the, to the continued engagement with the, with the faculty. Um, the technology is there for us to use, all of us, you know, it's not about fearing the technology. But determining, uh, the best way to use the technology, the most appropriate ways to use the technology. Um, everything we do is still grounded in, in some kind of standard principle ethics. Grounded within the humanities and education. We look forward to the, to the mentorship. Um, uh, we look forward to the branding and the positioning, um, that will emerge. And of course, the, the new and innovative ways in which we're going to, uh, you know, build on the educational experience. Of those who are to come and certainly those, um, not just those who are coming into the university. But even those in very, very remote spaces that we know will be able to, to reach. Uh, with the use, proper use of the, of the technologies. So, so thank you very much. And, um, and I, I, I guess I should also say thank you to, uh. Dr. Sonia, Sonia Stanley Naya, um, who had to make a, a, a quick move. But, um, really appreciate the engagement, uh, and the, the, the partnership. She's, she, you're back? Oh, great. Um, yeah, so thank, thank you, Sonia, for, for, for. So you're there. So you know what, you know what, Sonia, as we agreed, as, as we agreed? You're a little spotty. All right. I, I think, I think we're, we're losing Sonia there. She's been trying to connect. But just to wish you a, 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 a good night, everyone, and hope to connect with you again soon. Thank you very much for sharing.
Thanks, I'll go on, see you here.